Let's get this show on the road. Good evening, welcome to the League of Women Voters warrant review for the upcoming March 23, 2019 Annual Town Meeting, which will be held at the Abbott School Gymnasium, starting at 10:00 a.m., Saturday, March 23. I'm Bob Price from the League of Women Voters and I'm joined in this discussion tonight with Mark Cost, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Jody Ross, Town Manager, Dan O'Donnell, the Finance Director. We have 25 items to get through tonight, so we're not going to land on anyone for very long. I hope. The goal of our meeting is, the goal of the event is really to educate the voter as clearly as possible what he might expect to see at town meeting. We're not here to resolve any of the issues that would be debated on the floor of town meeting, but simply to lay out what the problems might be, what the topics for further discussion might well be on the floor of town meeting. So keep that in mind as you express yourself. And if you do want to express yourself, you would come to the microphone, not so that we can hear you, but so that the Westford Cat audience can hear what you have to say. These microphones don't amplify anything in the room, they simply are there for the broadcast. So let's start off. Article one, accept town reports. I could handle that. Go for it. They're always accepted. Article two, approve fiscal year 2019 supplemental appropriations.
Okay, so I'll take that one. So in the warrant every year, we handle the current fiscal year articles first, and so this is the current fiscal year we're in right now, and these are different department budgets that need additional funding to get through the fiscal year that ends June 30. So the first one is the fire department expenses, and that's actually a need for about $21,500 for the fire department for utility costs, electricity, gas, that sort of thing. And we're actually going to supplement that with $7,000 from the ambulance enterprise fund that you can see at the bottom, so when you add those two together, that equals 21.5, and that's for their utilities. The snow and ice, every year we do budget $400,000. That is the only budget that we can run over. We do frequently. This year, actually, right now, we have spent about $791,000, I believe, in snow and ice. And what we generally do is we supplement in mid-year, generally with about 400 unless it was a bad year, it might be 600, or a better year, maybe less. And then at the end, whatever's left, we put into salt. So we buy thousands of pounds of salt every year, and we bought 2,000, I believe, at the beginning of the year, and then supplemented with another thousand. So whatever we have left, up to 800, we will add to our salt shed. The next one would be recycling, and recycling is kind of a red herring right now, I guess. A couple of years ago, or in '18, in '18, I guess that wasn't a couple of years ago, in December, we were paying $56,000, $56, I'm sorry, per ton to dispose of our recycling. Couple of years ago, that was only $27 a ton, but it's going up to $80 a ton, and honestly, there's no end in sight here. We are going out with a request for proposals on recycling, I think it was released yesterday, but China doesn't want what we used to send them, they don't want anything that's dirty, if you recycle, please clean it, and so that market's changing. So we are going to supplement 75,000, so we continue to pick up your recycling and dispose of it. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, that's basically health insurance and life insurance for our retirees, and we do fund this every year according to the budget directive that the selectmen have given us. We were able to fund $1,011,026, and we were able to do that by appropriating 200,000 to bring that up to $1,021.026. I think I said that right. Anyway, so right now, we have about $5 million, five and a half million in that fund, and if we appropriate this, that will be $6,720,752. This is a, it is a huge obligation of the town that we try to fund every year, and we also do fund it through the health insurance budget too, but we want to be able to provide for our retirees what we have promised them. And the last one is the recreation enterprise expenses, and they've added a lot of new programs, and they need to pay people to run those programs, and then we charge fees to bring in revenue because it is an enterprise fund, so the expectation is that we will bring in more revenue than the additional 50,000 through the new programs, and so that's that supplement. So these are the budgets we're asking the town to supplement at town meeting.
Thank you, Jody. Who's going to do capital appropriation?
I think I'll do capital.
With me as support.
Sure. So with capital, I'm not-
Pick up the pace, if you would.
I am, I'm not going to go through every one of these.
Oh, sorry. Did I talk too long? I'm sorry.
It'll be done at 10:30.
Okay. Good to know.
So most of these are recurring capital requests, or most that happen each year, like the technology, new equipment, whatnot, so just going to highlight a couple of the requests out there that are new, starting with the public buildings of $200,000. In 2015, we requested $400,000 to maintain our buildings, that came from the DRA study. That money is running low now, we're down to about $60,000 at this point, and this is to replenish that fund so we can keep making repairs to our buildings. Skipping down a few, we're going to look at the schools, the $7,782 for the Westford Academy Trustee Field Phase Two design. Basically, this is a CPA project for most of the money, it's about $130,000 going through CPA. This is the remainder of that design for the visitor bleachers that isn't CPC eligible. So this request came through capital, we decided to, you know, request that the school send us to the CPA commission, and this is the part that they came back asking us to fund, and we were happy to do that. Moving on, we have $200,000 for the Town and School Safety Task Force recommendations. We did contract with a company called Guidepost, that's currently, they just finished going through all the town and school buildings, and they're working on making a recommendation for safety improvements. We don't have those yet, however, we don't want to wait until next October to start implementing some of those recommendations, so we have a placeholder here for $200,000 that, once we get those recommendations back, the Board of Selectmen and School Committee will decide how to proceed with the funding on those projects. Skip down a few more.
If there are any questions that come up, please wave your hand and-
Sure. So the first section was all from free cash, and then you got to see all this language here that is basically clearing up old funds that we're applying towards projects. All this money that we're re-appropriating is restricted at this point, so if we can find a use for a project to use that for, we want to take advantage of it. So basically, this first project here is for the engineering of 210,000 for the complete streets construction for Abbott School and Acton Road. So basically, it's to make pedestrian safety improvements at both those sites. Acton Road is off Fossil Road, and we're using a little bit of free cash and existing projects, actually premium from existing projects to help fund that, so we're only spending $7,000 in free cash for these, and cleaning up our books, which makes my accountant very happy. Moving down, we have a couple of projects for Water Enterprise, basically a UPS and a vehicle. We also have, again, we're cleaning up some old projects from the Water Enterprise to perform the Emerson and Jonas Roads water main replacement, which will be moving forward. Again, we don't have to bond this because we had these other projects that closed out. And moving down, we have a couple of, we have a second motion down here, if you keep going, for, it's $500,000 for road repairs. Last year, we appropriated $845,000 plus our Chapter 90 money. This year, we're going to do 500,000 because that's basically the amount that our software is telling us to, our road pavement management software. So it's exciting, we're getting these roads fixed. Below that, it's 1.2 million for the Town Farm Water Tank. This water tank was built in 1907, and it's actually in remarkably good shape, I guess they had good steel there, so they're refurbishing it to hopefully last another 110 years. And lastly, we're trying to fund $270,000 from free cash to recapitalize the capital stabilization fund. Forty of this is from the Joint Dispatch Project that was funded two years ago using capital stabilization. We're trying to put 40,000 back each year for the next couple of years, and then 270,000 is from 60, or 240,000 is from 63 Main Street. Over the next three years, we want to appropriate 240 back to capital stabilization to kind of refund that account. The balance right now is currently about 170,000, it was over 1.1 million two years ago. And that's capital.
Good praise. Any questions? Yes. Kristy.
Quick question, I'm just wondering if we have a list of roads that are going to be repaired for that 500,000?
We do. But my computer fell asleep, so I'll have to turn that on.
You want to know if you're on it?
Well, our road was, it's been a while, and it was just repaired, and I was like, I never knew this was coming, so I'm just wondering if there, if there's a list that they have out.
Yeah, they actually have a map and a list of roads that they're anticipating using. It's like a 20-page-long report, but yes, we do-
So it may be worth explaining a little bit. So several years ago, as part of one of the capital projects, I invested in this thing called a pavement management system. So it is a fairly sophisticated software program that tracks the status and the age and the depth and everything else associated with every single square foot of road in town, and then puts a grade on them, and then based on those grades, it also puts on how much cost there will be in order to put the road either to repair if it's a kind of a surface issue, or to completely replace. So it does that for all 25 square miles of road that we have as a town, and then it ranks them, and based on the available funds that we have, we then take those highest-ranked ones, and those are the ones that make it to the list. The only thing that alters that sometimes is if we have a water project or a road expansion project, that may change the timing of certain things. But yes, it's, we actually go through that during the capital review process in the fall, and it's, I don't know if it's online-
It should, yeah, the pavement management system is online, and-
Through the engineering department.
So I believe we also have the roads that we are planning to do next year, I believe we have that online too, but-
And where can the public access that?
On the engineering website, web westfordma.gov, engineering.
Great, thank you.
It's called, I think it's under Pavement Management System or something.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so I will handle CPA. So every year, we have to designate a certain amount to committee housing, which we are designating 10% and historic resources reserve, 10%. The additional will be 60,000 that the Conservation Commission is asking for to install two irrigation wells at Hill Orchard. As Dan mentioned earlier, the school committee is looking for 130,000 for the engineering and architectural design services for the Westford Academy Trustees Field Phase Two. The REC Commission is looking for 41,450 for basketball court resurfacing at Captain Stephen Hamilton Court, Greystone Courts, and the VFW Courts. They are also looking for 770,000 to do a Phase One of Forge Pond Beach improvements. That's a big project, we actually will have a little presentation at town meeting if there's a question on it, and that's a big improvement project to upgrade that, make it accessible, new playground, all sorts of improvements. And then lastly, the Parish Center for the Arts has asked for 100,000 for some renovations that they'd like to complete.
Authorize revolving funds.
Okay, so this one will, we're proposing that go on the consent agenda as it did last year. Basically, these revolving funds, they're not appropriations, they're just setting the expenditure limit for these certain accounts up here. The only change from last year is that the Border Health Flu Clinic immunizations, they increased $10,000 to 60,000 because the cost of vaccines are increasing, so they want to make sure they could purchase enough to give one to everybody who needs one.
Okay, so-
I don't know if this is the right place, I'm George Murray. Right place for this question, but the proposal for a revolving fund for stormwater management-
It's coming.
Okay.
And it's an enterprise fund.
Right. That's right, it's not a revolving fund.
Yeah.
I'll ask the question now.
It's coming, and you get me to have that discussion with.
Good man, George. Jody, your favorite article, appropriate-
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, but the good news about Pclorid is this number's been going down, and this is the lowest it's been since I've been here in 11 years. We are still required by the DEP to do testing and some filtration, everybody's safe, the water is safe, but these are requirements to track the plume and so on. So this is going to go on for a few more years, but it is, you know, getting lower and lower, so that's the good news on this.
Are we still filtering anything?
We filter, there is one home that has a reverse osmosis type system, we filter there. We did put in a new water main that handled everybody else, but we still need to test to track the plume.
And the biggie, approve fiscal year 2020 operating budget.
Yes, so just so you know, at town meeting, I will do the state of the town right before this article, that's what we usually do. And so just kind of to explain what's happened this year, we did put together an initial budget message in November, which I presented to the boards, and the Board of Selectmen every year develop a budget policy direction, which I do follow, and that's to sustain town assets through capital investment, maintain level services, have a balanced budget, and one of the things they've done for the last couple of years is they formed a public safety staffing review group, which made recommendations that we add some public safety staff. So in particular, they asked me to add five police officers and eight firefighters. Obviously, that's expensive, so last year I was able to, I think I hired two police officers and two firefighters mid-year because that makes it less expensive. This year, I was only able to fund one police officer mid-year and two firefighters mid-year, and in addition, the police chief gave up a cruiser to help me fund that. So that is something that they feel that as a town has grown, we had not added, I believe I've added one firefighter since I've been here in 11 years, which was the deputy. We hadn't added, we'd added a couple of police officers through school resource and so on, but anyway, so we get a fixed amount of new revenue every year. This year, it was about 3.7 million. What we do is we first have to take off those things we call kind of fixed costs, so those are things like health insurance, middlesex retirement, OPEB, as I mentioned earlier, other insurance, and debt service. We really don't have a lot of choices about those things, so we fund those first, and those are town and school, and in my budget message, it does break out how those, you know, break out between town and school. So after we did all that, that's the money we have left to divvy up. So what I did originally is I gave the schools their override money, and then I gave them an additional 1.59%. The town side has five town contracts being bargained right now that don't have funding, you know, for moving forward, so if you remove the funding for the five contracts, the town got 1.66. So we pretty much got very similar percent of our budget. When I got the town requests from town departments, they actually asked me for a 6.5% increase, so I had to pare down over 700,000 of their requests to bring the budget forward. Bill does his budget a little different than me, but he requested a 4.6% increase. Obviously, that was beyond what I could fund. So they got 919,000 new money and then the 530,000 of their override. The town got 388,000 new money and then 350 for contract settlements. That was November. We moved forward, and we talk a lot, and we had a lot of meetings, and in February, we were able to come up with the final figures for the budget. There were things like SSSR overlaid surplus that we were able to get, we had the final Neshoba Tech number, which went up significantly, over $100,000. We had health insurance that we were able to pare back a little bit, and the governor's budget. In the end, I had 179,242 surplus over what I had thought I had in November. I gave that to the schools, just, you know, gave that to the schools. So at the end, they'll be getting a 2.81% increase, I believe it is, with the override in there. The school committee, the Board of Selectmen, the finance committee have all voted to approve this budget. I think they recognize there's only a limited amount of funds to share, but Bill is, Bill Olson, our superintendent, is concerned about the growth in town. We are expecting several hundred units this year and a few more hundred next year, totally around 700 over the next couple of years, so he's worried about new kids coming in. So what we have agreed to do is to meet monthly and track the kids coming in, and also the kids going out, because, you know, there are some that move out, and then really understand what we're facing in the summer, and then we're going to take a look and see if we need to supplement the school budget based on those facts. So I think everybody's in agreement, I think we've always taken care of our schools, and we don't want to do anything different than we've ever done. So I think everybody's happy, well, maybe not happy, maybe that's a stretch, everybody is-
Agreed.
Has agreed that this seems fair for now, and let's evaluate in the summer, and plus, we might have new growth in terms of dollars into the town for these apartments and houses, and if that is more than I projected, which was a million dollars I projected, that will be monies that can be shared and spread out in the October town meeting. So there's my overview, I hope I didn't go on too long.
That was a little positive sign there, Bob.
All this is available on the town's website, Town Manager, the budget message, all the calculations, the budgets, and I encourage you to review that. Sorry, Bob.
You did fine, I know you worked very hard on this, and you deserve to blow your horn.
I'm not blowing my horn, I'm just trying to explain the budget, so.
Thank you. Okay, Article eight, create a stormwater management enterprise fund.
Okay, George, you ready? All right, here we go. All right, so I think there's a lot of, I don't know if it's misinformation, but a lack of clarity about what this, what this is. So I've been on the Stormwater Utility Subcommittee for, I don't know, decades, four years or something, and so this is a requirement from the EPA that there is virtually nothing that we can do about it. And the town is actually one of the leaders, quite honestly, in the state about where it's headed, how it's conforming, and how it is going to approach the funding. We spend about $600,000 a year today in working through the EPA's permit. Based on the revised requirements from the EPA, the annual cost is likely to go up to around a million six or more a year, and that comes from a variety of things, it's capital projects, it's operating expenses, it's labor associated with town departments that are having to deal with these requirements. So there's about a million dollars more in annual requirements than the town currently funds in its free cash. So there's been a year and a half study about different ways on how you might be able to fund that. One of them is through taxation, and one of them is through a fee-based structure. So the selectmen have not made any decision at this point in time about which way to go, whether it's going to be fee-based or tax-based. If there is an incremental revenue associated with having to pay for these requirements, the only other option is cutting costs elsewhere in the system, and that would be a reduction in expenses of the school system and a reduction of expenses in town departments, because you either have to raise revenue or cut expenses, but at the end of the day, you've got to get there. So the purpose of this article is to do nothing more than to create an enterprise fund, which is doing nothing more than allowing a place from an accounting perspective for the expenses to get captured such that when there is a decision to be made about how the revenues are going to be taken care of, that the expenses are delineated precisely so that the revenues, however they're going to be collected, can go against those expenses. And that's all this enterprise is meant to do at this point in time. There's some concern about, you know, the selectmen are just going to make this decision without any public input. I mentioned it at the Tuesday night meeting, at our selectmen's meeting, but starting on March 26th, we are, is part of our regular agenda, we will begin to deliberate the options of how to create this incremental revenue and the pros and cons so that we can begin to get public input. There's an awful lot of technology work that needs to happen ahead of us getting ready for this, and this is one of the reasons why the enterprise fund needs to be set up now. So with that, that's really the purpose of what this is doing. There's been no determination about where the monies are going to come from, how we're going to get the monies, and so forth. That's all will be talked about in public forums. How did I do, George, did I capture everything?
Just about. And I'm not grinding an axe here, it really is a question.
No, oh God. I don't know how to deal with not grinding an axes.
So there are really two issues here, what do we need to do about stormwater management?
Right.
And I think we're on a good track, and I think that's, that makes a whole lot of sense, nobody likes to spend the money, but we've got to spend the money. But the enterprise fund is where my question comes in.
Yep.
If I were a cynic, I'd say setting it up as an enterprise fund with a fee-based structure is a way of raising taxes without raising taxes.
Well, remember, I said that, so it's not putting an enterprise fund in, under the presumption that there's a fee-based structure?
Right, there's two separate questions, yeah. And that helped a lot, but why, is one of the options to simply do it with an override?
Well, it would be, yes, that's another form of taxation.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it's visible, and every project stands by itself. The thing that I'm concerned about is that almost every year, we go through the enterprise funds and the revolving funds, and we say, well, you know, that's the same old stuff, and it goes right on by, and it never gets questioned or asked about, that's the worry.
And that's actually the, correct me if I'm wrong, right, Dan, but that's one of the advantages of having the enterprise fund-
I know.
-is it doesn't go into this budget line item, and, you know, just gets swept away and, you know, in the regular operating budget review like they do now. The enterprise fund has a whole separate accounting that's going to go with it, and just that.
We'll be very transparent what we're spending on stormwater, which is a goal.
Right.
Just a couple of clarifications, because I don't understand something about it. So this is a program, the stormwater management is something that's going to be required by the state or the federal government?
Both.
Okay, is starting what year?
It's already started. So it's been going on for years, but what they do is they continue to ramp up what the requirements are-
Okay.
...in order to comply, and of course, they're all unfunded mandates, right? So the federal government says, you're going to do this, we don't have any money for you, sorry. The state does the same thing. So what they do is the requirements ramp up, which means then that we have to increase the amount of, the number of things that we have to do. So we already spend 600 roughly a year. The incremental, however it's funded, taxation fee, is only going to be the increment to the 600. So let's say if it's a million six a year, the objective is to only collect the incremental million every year, not the whole million six, because the 600 is already in-
Okay.
-what we spend, so it's really just capturing that incremental amount.
Okay, and so, so I just, I thought I had heard, I don't know, maybe the other night, that there's a date or a year that this is required by, it's not like required at this moment, but there's a certain, and what's that year?
So we had an EPA permit for stormwater, but that's expiring, and we have a new permit that's being issued.
Okay.
So that, I believe the new permit is this July 1st of 19, but we put 80,000 into the capital budget to show that we are moving forward for that permit, while the selectmen make up their minds about how they want to do this, but if we comply with the middle range of what the EPA is requiring, not the high range, but not the bare bones, and the selectmen will direct us on that, the middle range is going to cost us about a million dollars more a year, for the next five years, each year.
Right.
So- So that, that is the issue. The selectmen, I hope, are going to be making their decision this summer, and this is on their agenda of their next meeting on March 26th. It's been on several agendas, but not too many people have come.
No, no, I just want some clarification since, since I was here. So the, so the bottom line is, is regardless, the dollars will increase over time, no matter what.
That's right. That's right. And I'm sure it will only go up from there, because nothing seems to go down anymore, so.
Let me just mention that Paul Starrett, town engineer, has created this fact sheet to answer questions like yours about.
And there will be, there will be a brief presentation at Town Meeting about this that just kind of level sets everybody about what stormwater management is, because clearly, and most people should, probably shouldn't know, but it's necessary, because there's going to be an increase in costs.
And we're also going to show at Town Meeting what the impact is fee-based versus taxation-based, because it's actually kind of interesting. If we do it through taxation, the residents who live in single-family or multifamily homes are impacted a lot more than if we do it fee-based, because, because we're 85% residential versus 15% commercial. Whereas the commercial have the impermeable surface, which is really what's creating this issue. So we will show you that at Town Meeting, so at least you'll understand. If selectmen go fee, what it's going to cost you. If they go taxation, what it's going to cost you. So it's very interesting. We'll have that online shortly, we're just editing it right now.
Just a quick question. What's your timeline for BOS? I know you'll start on the 26th.
Yeah.
When will you make the decision as to which way you're going to go?
Whenever we have all the information. So I think Jody would like us to make it, you know, on March 26th, but.
No, no, that's not, that's not true, but by summer, by summer.
Yeah, so, we want, we also want to get as much public input as possible, because there are some concerns that this is doing some, you know, like George was, was asking about, that this is doing something that is not the intention of what this is doing, right? So we need to make sure that everybody's clear, and that everybody understands the choices, and if they have a, they have input on those choices, that we understand what those are.
The only other thing I'd add is, as Mark said, there's no money being raised now. It's just simply setting up an accounting fund. Next year, it would be in that enterprise fund, George, which is taken to Town Meeting, so you would be bud, you would be voting on the budgets. But if there's state funding, which the governor has filed a few bills to give us some funding, I don't know if we'll get it, but that will also go in the fund too. Anything we get from grants or, or state or federal, will go in that, that same enterprise fund.
Okay, thank you. Article Nine, Neshoba Valley Technical High School Roof, Window, and Door Replacement.
Yes, so this is a request, obviously, by Neshoba Valley Technical High School. They actually have a drone with a video that they may show at Town Meeting, if you want to see it, that shows the roof. They've repaired, they've repaired certain parts of the roof of their building, and we're actually paying off that debt right now. So for fiscal year 20, which is what we're going into, there's no cost to the town. But for fiscal year 21, there will be. The debt that we're currently paying on the other roof parts is about fifteen thousand a year. That's going to come off. So depending on whether they go with a 20-year bond, a 15-year bond, or a 10-year bond, next year we'll be facing an additional, if our, the number of kids we send there doesn't change, seven hundred and sixty dollars, not, not a big change, four thousand one fifty-seven if it's a 15-year, or eleven thousand for a 10-year. But they, they do have a presentation, if people want it, at Town Meeting. It is part of the capital plan, and they've really tried hard not to spike projects with us, take some off, as we do the town too. Wait till debt's coming off, and then slide new debt right in there. So that's what they're doing. Yeah.
Megan McRoth, I just had a question about that. So I read an article about the Chelmsford Town Meeting, that the assessment for that has to be approved by a two-thirds majority at all of the towns that participate.
That's right.
That are, that are enrolled. And it is, the amount they pay is decided by the percentage of enrollment. Do you know if we'll know by our Town Meeting, how many Town Meetings have already voted on that, and what the outcomes of those, those votes will be?
So we have an early Town Meeting, so we probably won't have the outcomes by Town Meeting. If there's been Town Meeting votes, we'll have those, but we, we do have an early Town Meeting.
They did say we are the first, so we have the earliest Town Meeting.
We're the first.
Yep.
Because I know that Chelmsford has a much higher enrollment percentage, so the article alluded to the fact that it might be a tougher pill to swallow in other towns. I'm not sure.
You know, I don't know. I mean, again, the way she's tried to structure this is the debt is coming off for the other roof project, so no one should have a big spike unless.
Right.
You know, I mean, we added seventeen kids, I believe, this year to Neshoba. That's why we were hit so hard with the assessment. But I don't know what their particular numbers are. This is, I mean, just like the town has capital projects, this is a school with a roof that's. Yeah, so I mean, it's like, if you don't keep the roof intact, that pretty much water flows down. You're going to end up in trouble somewhere else, but I can't speak for the other towns.
Yeah, no, I was just curious if we knew the timing.
Say that again. No, yeah, this is the, the towns that are in ours, I, that's not one of them, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jody. Article Ten, Appropriate Access Premium from Town Hall Funding to Roden Bush Rebuilding.
This is one of our more exciting articles we have at Town Meeting. So this is essentially, back in October, we refinanced a Town Hall bond to save some money. And we do so, we do so with a premium, so we can pay for the closing costs. Anything extra left over in that premium, called excess premium, needs to be transferred to a like project. So this is all that's doing. It's transferring this ten thousand dollars to the Roden Bush project, and therefore, we get to borrow ten thousand dollars less for that. So it's going to save us a few dollars there.
Article Eleven, Appropriate Chapter Ninety Local Transportation Funds for Roadway Maintenance.
Yes, so this is money the state gives us every year towards our road maintenance. We spend every dollar of it, and as Dan mentioned, we did supplement last year with town funds too, and we will be supplementing this year, but basically, just to maintain our roads. And I did just get the note on the figure. Did you, do you have that? Because it doesn't seem to be in my book here.
Yeah, it's eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. It's about seventy-three hundred more than last year.
And that's, okay, yeah. I was going to say very close to.
Those roads are also on that pavement management system. So it's the totality of the, of the two items.
Article Twelve, Appropriate Funds from Water Enterprise.
I'm up again, yeah.
OPEB Stabilization Fund, Water Enterprise Budget, whatever that means.
So this is also on the consent agenda, as it was last year. Essentially, the Water Enterprise fully funded their OPEB liability back in July of 2014. Therefore, they appropriate money in their budget into the fund, and then we take the cost for the actual health and life insurance for those Water Enterprise employees out of this fund. So everybody can see what's going on there. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
Just for anybody who's interested, just as a side note, Dan did his master's thesis in, for other post-employment benefits. So if anybody would like a detailed explanation of OPEB.
I could talk for hours about it.
And he does, and he does.
And interesting.
Article Thirteen.
Yes, so the Board of Selectmen formed a tax classification study group about a year ago, and they reported to the board to uphold a single tax rate in the town. So our commercial pays the same as our single, as our single, as our residents. And basically, what this, when they made that recommendation to the selectmen, they also said that we were spending a lot of time and money collecting personal property accounts with an assessment under ten thousand. And they felt that the time we spent trying to collect that was not worth it. So they did ask the Board of Selectmen to raise the assessment for personal property to ten thousand. So anything under ten thousand, we don't collect. That totals about forty-eight thousand, six eighty-four in taxes, which I think it says it up there. So the assessors are presenting this to Town Meeting to see if they're willing to adopt this Mass General Law that allows us.
What actually is personal property?
Furniture, equipment, manufacturing is not taxed as personal property, but, you know, desks, computers, anything like that for a business. Yep.
And summer village, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yeah, that's true. Right.
Article Fourteen, Authorization for the Board of Selectmen to Petition in General Court.
So this was a placeholder. This is Sliders Work, if anybody's been paying attention to that, the senior tax workoff, no, I'm sorry, senior tax.
Senior, low income.
Thank you. We had a, we had a select meeting that went on to midnight two nights ago, so I'm still a little groggy from that. It was a blast, but I'm a little groggy, so I apologize for being a little tongue-tis, tongue-twisted. But anyway, so this was a placeholder in case the state legislature asked us to go back to Town Meeting for another vote. We already took it to Town Meeting, had an affirmative vote. I was informed yesterday by Rep. Barcello, "We don't need to do this, so we're dismissing it. We're just waiting for the state legislature to put their rubber stamp on. Then it will go to a ballot in our town." So everything's good. We're just, we just wanted to be ready in case we needed to do something.
Article Fifteen, Authorize the Board of Selectmen to Accept Easements.
So we do this every year. I mean, if, if, these are small easements. If we need to do something, go on somebody's property to fix a sidewalk, or some small drainage, or a pole for utilities, we do this every year. It just means we don't have to call a Town Meeting to fix a small thing. Any big easements do, are not covered by this, so.
Article Sixteen, Authorize the Board of Selectmen to Amend the Agricultural Preservation Restriction on Boston Road to Allow the Construction of a Restaurant. Is there anybody here who plans on speaking in favor of this?
Not in favor, just what the petition is.
Okay. Since there will be no discussion, therefore, should I just describe what this is? I will do my best. I was at that meeting too.
You left early. I love you, Bob.
I'm going to have to correct my timesheet. As I understand it, what Abby is looking to do is to have Town Meeting authorize the selectmen to negotiate with him with the view of, of building a restaurant at the Old Drew's Farm opposite the fire station. Now, obviously, there's a lot of discussion, pro on his part, con on, you recognize a lot of these faces. On your part, and also discussion between the lawyers involved. Everybody seems to have a different perspective on whether this can be done legally or can't be. I think it was Mark who suggested that no matter what happens on this, we're going to wind up in court, one way or another, trying to litigate the solution here. Am I quoting you correctly?
No.
No, oh, sorry.
Somebody said it, somebody said it.
Somebody said that, that was not, yeah.
The attorney said it.
The attorney said it, right.
So what, what it's asking you to do, or what the motion is asking you to do is to support the negotiations with the selectmen with a view to, to building a restaurant. I don't want to say anymore.
You left off one important thing, and that's that it's permanently giving away the townspeople's right to vote on this land forever. And that's the most important aspect.
That depends how, how the vote goes.
No, no, that's true, if it passes, but that's the most important aspect of that, that we give up our right to vote on this land. And, and the other thing too is, is that if this is not released according to law, the APR program, the state, they will withhold grant money and funds. That's part of their punitive, you know, program that they have if you don't follow the rules.
Thank you. You speaking about, to this one or the next one?
This is a quick one. I just, I think the actual article does not authorize the selectmen to negotiate. It authorizes the selectmen to amend the agricultural preservation restriction. So the negotiation is one thing, but this actually says, "Okay, you can change that, and it's okay with us." And you can change it so it allows a restaurant.
You're correct. Diane?
I thought the presentation Tuesday night was really helpful. I've been keep, I've been trying to keep up with everything. Is that depth going to go on at Town Meeting?
You mean the conversation we had for two hours?
Well, no.
Or the?
Corbo.
A lot of his explanation, I thought, was, was helpful.
So. The, the proponents were invited, they were not available. They're in Florida. So that's why there's no one here, I guess, for that, and Abby was busy. But we will have Greg Corbo at the meeting. All this information is online on the Drew Gardens webpage, and there's lots of information there. As, as you know, this will be the third time that Abby has brought a request to amend this APR to the Town Meeting, so most of us have heard, heard something about this before. But we will have, they will be making a presentation at Town Meeting, and then we will have, you know, I'm sure, a spirited debate.
I should point out that the singular difference between a selectmen's meeting that goes on until midnight, and what happens at Town Meeting is that voters have the right to call the question, to move the previous question.
We should implement that for Board of Selectmen meetings.
I think I'm going to. I think I'm going to do that right when I announce each agenda item. I'm going to move every one of them.
Emily?
Will there be a specific presentation about the plans for the restaurant, do you think? Okay, so that'll be there, because I came in late for that. Okay. And I'm, I'm a little concerned personally, because I was on the negotiating committee in the nineties to get the development rights, the APR, and the right of first refusal. And I was a little concerned about our attorney, Town Counsel, saying that we don't own the development rights. And I, I guess I feel like if he says that, or he can't confirm that in some way, that that might jeopardize his credibility with people who have been here since the nineties and voted to get the development rights.
So I would suggest that you ask those questions on the 23rd, because he'll be there.
Okay, because he, it came up.
Yeah, and he answered it.
And he specifically said, "You don't own the development rights."
So I think you should ask that again, and if you don't agree with what he says, then.
Speak to that, which I will. Okay.
Yeah, we didn't think to invite him here tonight. I'm sure he would have been happy to come again. But he will, I will have two, two attorneys at Town Meeting, because it has been helpful, and, you know, we have a lot of interesting topics, so. Yep, John Giorgio and Attorney Corbo has been working on this issue since it began here in fourteen, with the town.
Lynn?
I just have a question. The, the article specifically says that it's to build a farm-to-table restaurant. Does anyone know what happens if the, if we approve this, and, and the developer gets to build the restaurant, and then he decides to sell it? Can it only ever in perpetuity be a farm-to-table restaurant? Does Town Meeting have any control over that in the future?
I think that's a good question for Town Meeting.
Yeah, we had a good long discussion about that Tuesday night, but, yeah.
Okay, Article Sixteen.
Seventeen.
All right. Seventeen.
Let's do it again.
Require the town to publicly bid the development rights on Boston Road in accordance with so on. Bill, you want to?
I do. I'm going to turn this this way, because the audience is over here.
Well, what about that audience?
This audience has heard it. You guys have heard it, so I'm going to talk to these people.
Have you all heard it?
You've all heard it. I think you've all heard it.
No, that's.
Wait, don't go. Just one quick question. The two-thirds vote, what's the, did that, how did that go through? Was it two-thirds or majority?
Yeah, it's, I'm sixteen, majority is what the attorneys believe.
Even though in Corbo's letter, he stated that a two-thirds vote was the better way to go?
Is, they believe it's majority, and so you, you can raise that question on the 23rd.
Okay, no, but he wrote it in his letter.
Let me just say this. I think what they advised yesterday in our motions meeting is that Susan count, not, not personally, but that she count whatever the vote is. That way, if it's challenged in court, and it is just a majority, and it was supposed to be a two-thirds, we have that vote. So it will be counted, but in his opinion, it is a majority vote.
Okay, so he changed his mind from the February 12th.
No, that's, he was giving another, another way to go about the process through Article Ninety-seven, and that would be a two-thirds vote.
Okay.
But if the, you know, whatever Town Meeting decides to do, we're going to count the vote, and then we'll move forward from there. Yeah.
So I'm back. So just one comment. I, I expect that when I actually give this presentation at the Town Meeting, that there will have been an extended discussion about the Drew Gardens. will have been an extended discussion about the Drew Gardens property just before that, so I don't have anything in here really explaining much about that, because I assume everybody will know. And I hope everyone here has some pretty good idea of what that's all about. If you don't, ask me, but I'm not gonna address it at the moment here. So the purpose of this article is really to ensure that the town doesn't give away for less than what it's worth its rights to that property. And I think part of the reason why this article is even on there is I think a lot of people in the town aren't really aware that the town actually does own something of value, even though it doesn't own the land. And it's kind of a slippery concept, so I wanted to have a chance to present it. So the purpose here, as I say, is to ensure that the town doesn't just accidentally give away something that's worth a lot of money.
Next one.
So what I do talk about in here is what the town owns, the value of those interests, how to ensure that if the town relinquishes them in some way, that it does so in a way that's transparent and fair and compensates the town for the full market value of the interest. And I will specifically not talk about the current owner, the current owner's plans, whether it's legal, whether it's a good idea, any of that kind of stuff. That's presumably will have been discussed amply beforehand, but.
Maybe.
So just, yeah, I should talk to you guys soon. Anyway, but by way of one page of, oh, well, this map I put in here on the theory that since there were gonna be no presenters for the Article 16, this shows you where the property is, so it's, in case you don't know. So twenty years ago, the town paid Keith and Nancy Boni, who owned the property at the time, $525,000 for, as Emily just said, the development rights, the agricultural preservation restrictions on the land, and the right of first refusal. And incidentally, the day after that meeting, I gave Greg a document which documented that.
That's what I read from Tuesday night.
Yeah.
Greg Corbo?
Greg Corbo, yeah. Anyway, enough about that. And so the current status is that without making changes to those restrictions that we have on the land, landowner can't do anything with it except farm it and have a country store. However, if we were to suddenly make some changes that allowed a restaurant to be put there, that site, which was purchased at a lower price because it was only agricultural, the value would jump up to the value of a commercial restaurant site. And what's it worth? Yeah, so the question is, so what would that actually be worth to a developer? What is it worth to us? And I think the simplest way to think about it is you take the value of the land as agriculturally restricted land, take the value as a commercial restaurant site, take the difference, and since we control whether it goes from the lower to the higher, that's what we own in that property. In addition, I think there is probably what I would call a premium for the fact that, you know, we put those on there for a reason, which was to keep the land open and to keep it in agriculture. So that's kind of an intangible, but I think that that has some value to the town as well. So the town's interests, I think, are worth a lot. Having, having looked at comparable land and commercial sites and so on, it's not immediately obvious what the right number is, which is why I don't put numbers in here. But in any case, I think it's worth a lot. We don't really know, we've never had any appraisal done. So the question is, if we are to relinquish those interests, how do we make sure that we actually get paid what we're due? And that's where these two laws that I referred to come in, this Mass General Law 184, Section 32, is the law, well, 184 governs APRs and defines them as interests in land which have value, and says that changes can be transacted, and as it says here in quotes, "in the same manner as the holder may dispose of land or other interests in land." Well, that same manner is described in Mass General Law 3B, Section 16, which governs real estate transactions, and requires the town to get an appraisal, solicit proposals, advertise, open the proposals publicly, and publish and explain if the accepted price is less than the appraised price. Pretty simple, kind of obvious process. And in my view, the way this would benefit the town and all of us was at first, we would, it would establish a market value of those interests. I think it would be accurate to say, we don't really have a good handle on what that number is today. And I think it's hard for us to enter negotiations with anybody without knowing, having some good idea of what it's worth. Second, it would be an open and transparent process, and it avoids the appearance of impropriety. And I think there's been a lot of emotion around this, and I think part of it's been due to the fact that people aren't necessarily sure they're seeing all the moving parts. I think it would be good to get them out in the open. And obviously, in compliance with the law, and also, the town, in the end, should then get what it deserves, you know, and if it makes the decision to give away the interest, it would be paid appropriately. What else I say here? Thank you.
So, Phil, is this your presentation for Article 16?
Seventeen.
Because the vote will have already happened on 16, and a lot of this information.
The vote will have happened on 16. There are two possible outcomes. It will pass, or it will fail, right? If, in either case, let's take the second one first. If it fails, history says it may come back again. Right?
So you're sort of sweeping ahead the crumbs.
Well, it's being prepared. And if it passes, the Article 16 says nothing at all about process. All it says is it authorizes the selectmen to make that change to the APR. They can't make that change to the APR without following other laws that apply.
It seems like your presentation also might influence the vote on 16.
Well, it might. But, but I think it makes more sense to come afterwards. I understand your point.
I know, I don't want the barn door closed after the horse is.
I understand your point.
I should point out, you made it under the seven-minute cully rule for your presentation.
I made it under, yeah, it's about three minutes, if I don't give all that, you know, give the explanations to why I'm not describing Drew Farms.
Did you say three minutes? And you said 5:30.
Yeah, I know, but I had to start out by explaining why I'm not talking about.
Oh, okay. All right, just making sure. Okay, just making sure, Bill.
Anyway, does anybody else have a question? Okay, thanks.
Oh, I actually.
Oh, sorry.
The selectmen do not recommend.
Right, well, I can't.
I know that was a question, not for you.
You're not telling what the select vote was on Tuesday for the other articles, right? You didn't say anything about 16.
I haven't.
Okay.
We can't, I mean, it's public information, so it doesn't.
I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, so 16 was in, it's in the motions.
Oh, I didn't get that, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, so 16, we, in order to authorize, it was 401, so I was the abstention, and I abstained basically because I'm waiting to hear what town wants us to do.
Yes, we don't. And the vote, yeah, the rest vote, no.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, to not recommend. Right. And then 17 was 50 to not recommend, principally because after a lot of discussion the other night, all five of us believe that this process for 17 is redundant with what we would have to go through anyway. And there's some question about what some of those processes are, and a disagreement between what Bill believes and what our attorney and the rest of us believe. So that's it.
So a question on that point. So if it's redundant, it can't hurt to approve it, correct?
Well, we already voted to not recommend it.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask whether you recommended it, but if it's redundant with what you would have to go through for 16, then it wouldn't hurt to approve it.
So I guess what I would say is, I'm the chief procurement officer, so I have to follow Mass General Law for procurement. But I think the question on this was, Bill believes that the town should go out to bid or whatever for the development rights or the APR, not to make him comply with the APR. And Greg Corbo says, but, but Ebbie owns the property, so how can you take those rights and give them to somebody else because Ebbie owns the property? So that'd be like saying, you know, McDonald's can buy something and put it on Ebbie's property. So that's in a nutshell, but I think that's, if we have to follow Mass General Law, we will follow Mass General Law, but he doesn't believe that that development rights, because the town doesn't own the property, that we can give those to somebody else.
And I would encourage, again, while he's here, right, because it's probably not right to do it tonight when, when he's not here and can explain it better than.
Better than me, yeah.
Certainly better than I. So I'm sure this will come up again on the 23rd.
Okay, and I agree with you, he's not here to get a legal opinion. However, the issue is, is there potentially, we don't know for sure, because you won't know anything until it goes out to bid, many people who could be interested in this, the Audubon Society, other restaurants in town that want to prevent this from going in there and making him go on 110. I mean, we don't know until it's out there, but to be short-sighted, to say nobody would buy it, is irrelevant. We bought it, we bought the rights.
I'm not the attorney, so I don't want to argue with you.
No, 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 I know, but we bought the rights.
Yeah, we did, I know we had some of this discussion Tuesday night, so I'm sure we'll have it again on the 23rd.
I'm not the attorney, so let's talk to Greg about that.
Before we go in any deeper, yeah. Article 18, establish a policy to limit the use of artificial lights at recreation spaces from dusk till 10:00 p.m. Casey's not here. Anyone?
So I have a late amendment that Casey sent me today, which I don't know if, is that it up on the screen? I can't, I can't read that.
Can I have the 20 font, please?
Do we make that bigger? All right, yes, so that is the, and if you can't read it, basically.
Yay, even more would be good.
So this is, this is a citizen petition. So this is, do you want to work for town meeting? Give you a stool there. So basically, this is a citizen petition to limit the use of artificial lights from dusk to 10:00 p.m. at all town-owned locations where there is to illuminate outdoor recreation spaces for organized group sports and related activities, with the exception of Westford Academy. So I think the, I mean, those of you that come to selectman meetings, and they're always exciting and interesting, there's been neighbors to the VFW fields that feel the lights are on too late for all the games that are played there, and so I think this kind of came out of the selectmen and the rec commission maybe not necessarily coming to a resolution on what should happen, so it is a citizen petition.
I understand, or something voted against this?
So this language changed again, so the board is posted on March 23 at 9:00 a.m., and they will be revisiting this.
We voted on the language of the, previously.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, well, well, that wasn't just, it was a definition of all recreation activities, so the definition of what that was was very unclear to us.
Can I come to the microphone so people can hear?
I don't really want to. It's a silly question.
The camera's going to you anyway, whether they can read your.
Okay, here's my silly question. The wording of that is confusing, and I wasn't at the selectmen. So are they saying, is this to limit it in that they only want lights allowed from dusk till 10:00, or that from dusk till 10:00, they want to limit the use of lights?
No, so it's meant to mean, I believe, that, that, well, let's say it was cloudy outside at 6:00.
Okay.
The lights would come on, or 7:00, or you know. So lights can only be on until 10:00 p.m. That's essentially what this means. And after 10:00, no lights.
But I get what you're saying, the wording could be interpreted the other way, so we can amend that on town meeting floor. Because it does say limited.
Emily.
And I'm a dark skies person, so I would like this amendment to say on fields that are being used, because you could imply that all town-owned fields will have lights from dusk to 10:00.
I would encourage you to talk to the citizens' petition.
I will.
And do that, because we can't.
No, I know you can't, but I think that's, you know, it's an excellent amendment.
If he's watching, maybe he will.
But, yeah.
Yes, so that is Casey Cavston, if you want to reach out to him.
I got his email. But that's the intent, right? It's only the fields that are having use.
To shut the lights off at 10:00 p.m. in fields that are being used, not to turn all the lights on. Right.
Except Western Academy, because they don't have any letters, you're bothered by lights.
I think you should stand up and say that on the 23rd, George.
Okay, Article.
What's the current rule? Like, how late was it? Is there any rule that says what time they have to turn off at all?
Yes, there is a rule, yeah. The board of selectmen voted a policy, the board of selectmen voted a policy, I can't remember exactly when.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did.
And I believe it's, they're on.
Lights out a half hour after the last game. So principally a forged, so the, the last game on Friday nights is supposed to start at 9:00. Sometimes they don't start till, because if the other two games go late, so sometimes it can be on till 11:00, 11:30. So it's a half hour after the last game.
It can be, I think, 10:30 weeknights, 11:30 Friday. That's my recollection.
Yeah, and then. Right, and then the league that uses that field has already, has already said they're fine with this, because they're not going to do 9:00 o'clock Friday games anymore.
Nothing else?
Questions are great, though, because it's gonna get me prepared for town meeting.
Article 19.
So this, if you, we have, actually, we have the proponent here. We have this proponent here.
Invitations for the possession and consumption of alcohol.
Ken Wilmer.
Ken Wilber.
Wilmer, W-I-L-M-E-R. Yeah, this, we brought forward this petition because the current policy in town, when alcohol is allowed on the fields, allows it basically whenever the permit users have the field. So if you have, if you have the field, if you have a permit for the field five nights during the week from 6:00 to 10:00, it allows the users of the field to consume alcohol on the premises during that entire time. And, you know, if you were like me, you assume that public drinking, or drinking on public lands was not allowed at all, but that's not the case. The state has allowed that discretion to the towns. So when we originally drafted this, we set it up so that the same policy applied to all town-owned properties, and we were allowing for single-use permits, that is, a permit on a single day to be given, and the number of those permits on each parcel of town land to be limited. The board of selectmen pointed out to us that East Boston Camps, the farmer's market, other events in town would be adversely affected by that. So we're in the process still, right now, of amending it. And what we really want to get to is a policy that limits the alcohol consumption on the town athletic fields and disallow it except for certain special occasions. And what we're currently thinking about right now is allowing the single-use permits, say, three times a year at any particular field for any particular organization. And that's basically it.
Any questions?
As this is worded, it says, I have to have a permit to bring a beer onto public property. No person shall bring any alcoholic beverage onto any public property or possess or consume any beverage without having received a single-use permit granted by the board of selectmen. You guys are gonna be busy.
Well, that, I hope not. Actually, right now, the way, the way the bylaw is worded right now, you cannot bring any alcoholic beverage onto a town property without the permission of the board of selectmen.
But the organization presuming that was operating the events would have a one-day permit.
Right.
This says, I have to have a one-day permit. Individually. That's all I'm saying, is that it's badly worded, and it's gonna cause trouble at town meeting.
So the motion has changed since, if you're looking in the FinCom book?
No, that's 19, no. That underlined paragraph at the end of 58.3.
Yeah, I don't see board of selectmen anymore in there.
It says, it's there. I have to have received a single-use permit granted by the board of.
Oh, wait, that was, it was amended again today. I'm looking at the prior amended version.
Say, we're still working on the final language for this.
This is why the board has not taken a business.
We keep getting updated amendments. We keep getting updated amendments, so this is not it.
Stay tuned. Anyone have?
Wait till the 23rd.
Does it say Board of Selectmen, though? Where's it say Board of Selectmen? You know, we'll have to look at, I don't have Board of Selectmen in the, when I have.
No, we didn't.
Yeah. Well, the single-use permit is granted by the Board of Selectmen.
Well, but the, the bylaw stated that if you want to consume or possess alcohol on town property, you must seek permission from the owner or person lawfully in charge or control of such property. So, for example, E.B.C., if you want to have a wedding, you've got to ask the conscom. If you want to have a wine tasting at the library, you've got to ask the trustees. If you've got to, if you want to ask on recreation fields, it's the Board of Selectmen, so.
And that makes a lot of sense. All I'm saying, the way this is worded, it says, I have to have a permit for my beer.
Well, you can't bring a beer on public property without the selectman's approval.
How many years have you been doing that? I see your, your point, George. And $100 a pro. You have, so you have a check to write.
We're going to watch you now. We're going to watch you now, George. Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, that's.
I, I, I understand your confusion, and we'll work on clarifying that. Yeah, so the intent is, you know, if, if the organization has permission for, for an event with a, with a permit, then you can bring alcohol onto the, onto the property and drink it there.
Thanks, Ken.
So, and again, the idea is to, and right now, we're thinking, like, you know, possibly limiting the number to about three per year, per site, per organization, that would allow for something like a beginning-of-season party, an end-of-season party, and some special event during the year, like an All-Star game or something like that.
Any more?
Eileen Tetrow, so I'm just curious, is there something that's happened that is, like, bringing this to the forefront now, or is this just, like, you just realized that there was, or whoever did this realized that there was an oversight? It's just, I'm curious if there's, like, some big issue in town that I didn't know about.
Prior, prior to 2014, there was no policy at all in town regarding the alcohol consumption. In 2014, the Board of Selectmen voted on a request from the Adult Softball League to allow them to, to have alcohol at the field.
In the parking lot, in the parking lot.
In the parking lot.
Which has been going on for 40 years.
There, there's a difference, though, between not having permission and doing it versus having permission, which says, go ahead and drink as much as you want, for as long as you want. So, I mean, it's, 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 so, so that's what changed in 2014, and there have been some incidents.
Thank you. Diane.
So the liability, when we hold events like this softball league, they are required to fill out a permit, sign in a waiver of liability, and also provide us with insurance coverage. There's questions whether that coverage does actually cover alcohol in the parking lot after the game.
Or anywhere.
And so at East Boston Camps, for example, we do get a waiver, and I believe insurance coverage from there, too. But, I mean, we have events at Roden Bush, they have some wine tasting, we do the farmer's market. So if the town decides to approve this, then we'll look at, you know, what our procedures are. If they decide to not approve it, we'll look at our procedures, and I think what I will do, regardless, is bring to the Board of Selectmen what our insurance carrier recommends, because obviously, they want high levels of insurance because they don't want to be on the hook for things. And I'll have to see what the selectmen think is reasonable to ask people for, for a one-day policy or whatever they have. But I think it's also important to note that if the town does allow, farmer's market, E.B.C., even at the games, it doesn't necessarily mean we're liable for allowing someone to consume alcohol on our property, so. Well, it is capped at $100,000. Obviously, we don't want to be sued at all, but it doesn't necessarily mean we're liable because we give that permission. But it is, you know, something that the voters need to understand and weigh in on, so.
Jody, in those other places, isn't there a requirement to have a bartender or somebody who's licensed to distribute the alcohol?
No, as a matter of fact, we had a request, I shouldn't advertise this, but we had a request for a shower at Parkerville Schoolhouse. We don't necessarily require them to have a million-dollar liability policy for a shower, a baby shower at the Parkerville Schoolhouse, but, you know, it's something that we should continue to talk about and have the selectmen decide to give us direction.
I think a license requires a licensed server, a permit does not.
Right, a license is when you're going to sell alcohol. If you're going to sell alcohol, which would be, you know, say, the farmer's market winery, whatever, then you need a special license, which the Board of Selectmen approve, and the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, that's different. And there is liability insurance required on that, but if you're having an event, like a wedding at East Boston Camps or whatever, you don't necessarily sell alcohol, you may give it away. If you're giving away alcohol or bringing it on town property, there's no special license, it's just permission. I don't know if that makes sense.
It does.
Okay.
Now, this is not in regard to the liability, there are two other points that I did want to mention. One is that the Parks and Recreation Commission has voted and sent a memo to the town manager endorsing the policy of no alcohol at the town fields. And secondly, the, again, the Parks and Recreation Commission did a survey of 25 towns, and none of them allow alcohol on town fields, on athletic fields. So those are just two other pieces of information.
Okay, let's, let's move along. Article 20, amend Chapter 1 of the town bylaws, penalties for violating bylaws and regulations. Juliette?
Hi, first, I want to actually offer, Jody, I'd like to amend this tomorrow, also, to clean it up. So since there's a little bit of room. Sure. To correct the top, but it's quite, oop, mine would be good. Thank you. It's the PowerPoint one. Yeah. There we go. All right, so in order to protect our town and remove ambiguity where it exists, following, I have proposed some changes regarding enforcement of our town bylaws, rules, and regulations to protect us all. Quite simply, for Section 1.1, regarding violations, currently, as it reads, "Any bylaw of the town of Westford or rule or regulation of its boards, commissions, and committees, the violation of which is subject to a specific penalty, may, in the discretion of the town official who is appropriate enforcing person, in the method provided in Section 21D of Chapter 40 of the general laws." So the proposed amendment is to read, "Any bylaw of the town of Westford or rule or regulation of its boards, commissions, and committees shall be enforced when observed or reported in the method provided in Section 21D of Chapter 40, general laws." So that's part one. So under the violations, this is not suggesting that anybody needs to be policing regularly, but when there is, when there is a violation, there's an intent to proceed with appropriate steps. If you go to the next slide. Section 1.2, regarding enforcement, currently reads, "That the enforcing person shall mean the Board of Selectmen of any, or any police officer of the town of Westford with respect to any offense, and the following boards and officials," and I won't bore you to tears, "but as it currently reads, if more than one official has jurisdiction in a given case, any such official may be an enforcing person with respect thereto. The town manager shall compile a detailed statement of the actual jurisdictions assigned to the appropriate enforcing person, and the statement shall be filed with the selectmen and available for inspection." Okay, so my proposed amendment is to add a paragraph that reads, which is, by the way, common to other towns in Massachusetts. "The town manager and the Board of Selectmen shall instruct town council to take legal action as may be necessary to restrain a violation of this bylaw, and enforce regulation and the bylaws hereunder, and the town council shall forthwith comply with such instructions." So it's simply adding a paragraph that details what should be done in the case for enforcement. Next slide, please. And 1.3, penalties, no change there, they are the same as our current standing. So that would be $100 for the first offense, 200 for the second, and 300 for the third, fourth, and subsequent offenses. Any questions?
What size font is that? It's 20. That's 20?
It is?
This is 20, yeah.
Any questions? Excellent, thank you. Oh, Phil, was that fast enough for you?
Oh, yeah, the, the timing was perfect.
Excellent.
And was there a Board of Selectmen vote on this?
Yeah, we voted not to recommend 5-0.
Was there something that precipitated this?
Thank you for asking. There, there are a few things that I am, as a citizen, am concerned about. And in the course of the past several years, as, for example, here, with the, specifically one case, the Drew Gardens situation. The current owner is in violation of some of our bylaws, and there is lack of enforcement. And a, as a citizen of this community, and taking great pride in what we have as bylaws, we all work very, very hard to craft those. We sit in town meetings for hours each year to make sure that we have good structure for our town, to protect our town. At this time, as it's written, it's up to the discretion of certain bodies as to whether or not those will be enforced. And from my perspective, I am hoping we can remove that ambiguity, and I think that we, as a town, will be protected better, knowing that where there are violations, they'll be enforced.
So, this would, assuming this applies across the board, every property in town, my neighbors, everyone, that the Board of Selectmen will then have to hold liable, and administrative work, I see a whole lot of issues. Your neighbors, too?
Well, again, if someone is reported, so I'm not recommending that anybody is policing all of this, but if something is, for example, the Drew Farms piece, which is clearly in violation on several accounts, in that case, there has been no enforcement. So we're looking for enforcement that is lacking, and this would strengthen our rights as citizens in our town. For what? I mean, what are they doing? Okay. Well, that's, that's a thought. If, if you, if you have a neighbor who is potentially in violation of something that is serious, and you feel it's important to report that, and you want it resolved, certainly. Do you really think that in Westford, that's really common? I don't. I think that most of us follow the law. Right, so exactly my point. So, so there isn't likely impact to the residents of this town because we follow the law. It's where we're not protected, for those that violate it, that is a problem. Well, I mean, it's, it's reality, right? Any other questions?
If my neighbor's shed is too close to my property line, I don't have to talk to him about it, I can just call town hall and say, he down here.
Well, you could do that now. You see, this, this is simply saying that, right now, you could do that, but there are certain policies, like, for example, the reason why we, that I, in response to your question, the APRs were written very specifically with guidance to allow, disallow, and some retained rights built in. Those documents were very, very clearly written. However, what was not included in them is penalty clauses for when they're violated. There's nothing written in there. So the, the challenge there is that when trying to, at times, exercise influence to stop things like abandoned buildings and trash on the property, and the things that have been happening over the past several years, there is nothing compelling that owner at this time to resolve it because we're not enforcing. So this is an example of how we could enforce, so that we're not left hoping that maybe somebody will do something about it.
Mark, how can the Board of Selectmen not recommend?
Because we have discretion today, we would still have discretion tomorrow, and therefore, it's redundant to what we already have in front of us.
It isn't redundant. It actually would.
According to the town's attorney, and the other attorney on the Board of Selectmen is redundant.
There would be a legal battle on that one, but it would give us more enforcement. And it certainly sends a message to our Board of Selectmen to say, listen, we're looking for you to represent us. This is part of that job, protecting the town. Right now, we're not being protected. So we have an issue that keeps showing up because of lack of enforcement. Again, which administrative work? So if you look at the fine table, and if there is someone who is actually violating laws, first, there is, the, the whole process as it's defined, and it's interesting, because Mr. Costas is indicating that there's no change, so in theory, it's already there. Have you all reported your neighbors? How much administrative work has happened now? So if the answer is that it's the same, and there haven't been a lot of reports, the additional administration should be minimal. However, when there is something viable, like the Drew Farms property, which is currently clearly blatantly in violation, we could take steps, and $300 a day, which quickly would tick to $9,000 a month until he resolves the issue, and the structure that is currently abandoned and illegal would either be removed and cleaned up, or otherwise restored, but leaving an abandoned building is not acceptable. Got it? So that's one. The other would be asphalt plant trucks, for example. So the agreements currently say that there's a limited number of trucks that can cut through town. Are we going to monitor that? Are we going to hope that maybe that'll be enforced when it happens? I don't like to be left wondering whether or not our representation is doing that. I like to depersonalize it and know that the laws are on our side.
I had a good one. Thank you, Juliette.
Thank you.
Article 21, add delinquent firebox alarm fees to tax bills. Sounds like a judgy.
This is hours of conversation.
Sure is. So everybody knows what the firebox alarms are, those things in schools, you pull the alarm. Right here, great example. So.
Don't pull it, don't pull it.
No, no, no. So anyways, the town charges $200 for each of those boxes, not the schools, though, for all the commercial properties in town. We don't have a lot of, when, when somebody doesn't pay that, we don't have a lot of teeth in the law to allow us to go after them to collect it. Therefore, we're proposing this article where if an account is unpaid, the treasurer can authorize a municipal charge lien and put that account into tax title, so then we can enforce it. So we, we've had a few issues over the year, and we just want to make sure everybody's paying their share to help maintain the fire alarm system.
Is that a fraudulent pulling of it? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 this is a fee that everybody who has one of those boxes, they pay $200 per year to the fire department. So, and the fire department.
Because they have to be inspected.
Right, to maintain the system.
Better. Okay. Okay, Article 22.
So the, this is on the increasing the Board of Cemetery Commissioners from three to five. And in our charter, it is silent on the membership, which means it reverts to Mass. General Law, and Mass. General Law says three. So the cemetery commissioners have been very busy this year, and there's a lot of interest. As a matter of fact, I've gone to many of their meetings, there's 20 people at their meetings, more than some of the Board of Selectmen meetings. So.
They can have them.
There's, there's three, there's three members, there are three interested people to be appointed. Of course, I could only pick two, I do appoint them, but if this passes, it will go to the state legislature as a special act, charter change, but they are doing great work, and so they want to increase their membership to allow them to have a quorum more easily. They voted to support. And there were, the chairman will make a brief presentation at town meeting.
Cemetery Commission Chairman.
What did I say?
Well, you just said.
Yeah, it's a Board of Cemetery Commissioners, so they have a big title, yeah.
Article 23, accept Shannon Circle as a public way.
So this is, Shannon. So, this is, Shannon Circle was constructed a long time ago, I think in the eighties, and there was intention to bring it to town meeting for acceptance in the early nineties. I don't know what happened because I wasn't here yet. I mean, I was here, but not in Westford. And, but the town did take the bond, they did do some improvements. Somehow, it was on the warrant, it got pulled at the eleventh hour, and so the residents never got their road accepted. They've done a lot of research, and they found out that maybe the town didn't do exactly what we should have done back in nineteen ninety, whatever. So, they have been working with our town engineer, our legal counsel, their legal counsel, they've done lots of work, and so we are finally bringing this to the town to see if we'll accept it as a public way.
There will be champagne.
Not on town property. Except George. Except George.
George, just little cups, like.
And the Board of Selectmen vote was?
They voted five oh, and the Finance Committee recommended eight oh one. And actually, the one that didn't vote recused herself because she lives on Shannon Circle, of the Finance Committee.
All right. We finally get to the one you've all been waiting for.
So, this, these are two articles.
Avery's here.
Oh, Avery, I'm sorry. Do you want to speak? She's hiding back there.
Come on, Avery.
I'm sorry, I almost took this.
This is the amended? No. We haven't, we haven't gotten the amended. So.
Um, no.
Yesterday, at the motions meeting, we discussed it, and the school committee will be revoting an amended version that will go to Dan and Jody hopefully tomorrow, that will state the EVO Middle School at Stony Brook, and it will also include upon his retirement are the two amendments that have been agreed upon, as well as this has the naming committee still listed as the sponsorship will be the school committee.
It's like it never wants to come up.
I voted on mine.
It's, it's off.
I know, but he corrected it yesterday while we were sitting there.
Auto correct keeps going back to naming committee.
It does say school committee, I promise you, so I don't know.
That's fine. And then, I believe, our vote, and then we will allow the Selectmen then to vote that morning as well. There are questions on that? Do you want me to give the rationale that I gave yesterday?
Only if people want it.
Okay. So, we have been back and forth on this. The vote that stands there at the four to zero is how we interpreted the policy in that it was brought to us by the naming committee, which is a dormant-at-best committee, subcommittee, and they brought it to us. We felt that it was worthy of going to town meeting and deemed, we wanted to hear what the people had to say. So, we moved it along. So, but as, as I said, I met with the naming committee a week or two ago to get their feeling on making some little tweaks that might help. So, those are the two adjustments that will be made. I think the school committee in general feels that putting something on this building isn't necessarily the best tribute. We all agree logically that the administration building is probably the best choice because it's an unnamed building, but the when, where, and how is so far removed at this point, at five years maybe. We just don't see that as a realistic option. So, we are moving the Stony Brook School forward.
Can I just ask you a question? Don't go. Are, are any women considered for this honor? I mean, it always seems like everything's named after men, except for Rita Miller.
Correct. Rita Miller was a consideration for that purpose specifically. And there has been precedent in renaming a school. The Day School was actually the North School, and it was named for Norman E. Day, who at the time was a school committee member.
But what about women?
Absolutely, absolutely. I agree wholeheartedly, and I know that was the effort with the Miller School.
Maybe the administration building. We have five years to think about that.
So, what happens to Article twenty-five if Article twenty-four passes?
So, the Article twenty-five is.
We rename the town.
Christie, why don't you come up? But let me just say that the moderator has decided that she's going to allow discussion on these together.
Simultaneously, and then we'll vote.
So, there will be, Avery will be making a motion for Article twenty-four, and then Christie, who's the citizen petition for twenty-five, will make a motion for Article twenty-five, and then Susan's going to open debate on both articles so, at the same time. Then, when it's time to vote, they will vote on twenty-four first, and then twenty-five after.
So, we could end up with two buildings being forever.
Or you could amend it to be Jody Ross. I'm teasing. That's teasing.
You are? That's news.
I'm just teasing. Just teasing.
Mine will be in the ground.
Christie?
I think that's outside the four corners of the article.
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
Hold on. Oh, the four zero clarification is we had school members absent, and then we voted. So, the revote will happen.
Are you posted, are you posted tomorrow? Are you posted tomorrow?
For the twenty-third.
For Saturday?
You're going to, you said you were going to give me the amended language tomorrow, but you're going to vote. Okay, but you're not going to vote. The school committee won't vote till Saturday. Okay, okay, that's fine.
Let's let Christie have her say.
Thank you. So, the reason that I brought the citizen's petition is because Stony Brook School has a name with a lot of tradition. So, I thought, and to honor Mr. Olson, it would be nice to have him on the new administration building. And since we haven't decided on that yet, the petition says to rename Millennium in his name, and then any subsequent school administration building. And hoping that is, if it's five years, it might be, but it might be less, as we're looking at sixty-three Main Street now as a possibility. Nothing's set in stone, but it would be quite an honor, I would think, for him to have his name on a new building as to, as opposed to one that already has a name. And I'd like to talk about the name. The tradition of a school with the name Stony Brook has been around since the early eighteen hundreds. In eighteen twenty-two was the first brick building named Stony Brook School. It was at twenty-eight Stony Brook Road. The original school was replaced by a wood frame building in eighteen seventy, and then it closed in nineteen oh nine, so when students were moved over to the Frost Building. This history of a Stony Brook School in Westford was thoughtfully considered when the two thousand and three Middle School Naming Committee submitted their name recommendation for the town's new middle school to the school committee. And I want to read an excerpt from the April fourteenth, two thousand and three school committee minutes. Ken Tebbetts, Chair of the Historical Commission and a member of the Naming Committee for the new middle school, addressed the committee, reporting that the Naming Committee had unanimously decided to recommend the name Stony Brook Middle School. He pointed out that Stony Brook powered the Abbott and Brookside Mills, and that in eighteen seventy's Schoolhouse Number Two was named Stony Brook, making it seem appropriate that Westford's Middle School Number Two be given the same name a hundred and thirty-three years later. So, this was at the Maytown Meeting, then, where, oh, excuse me, and then it went to the Maytown Meeting in two thousand and three where it was voted unanimously to name the new middle school the Stony Brook School. Five months later, at a special town meeting, a group of veterans submitted a citizen's petition to rename Stony Brook to the Veterans Memorial Middle School. Instead, town meeting made a motion to indefinitely postpone that article, and a resolution was made to rename the area around the school, the Veterans Memorial Complex. There was one voice who opposed changing the name. He was a sixth grader at the time at Stony Brook, and he was given permission to speak to town meeting. He noted that he was against the name change, and that the entire sixth grade class debated the issue and voted two hundred and ten to twenty-two in favor of keeping the name Stony Brook. So, the name Stony Brook has a rich history in Westford. The current middle school has carried on that Westford tradition for sixteen years now, and it has done so with pride. The school has a fantastic reputation and a distinct identity. A name change for an organization is not easy. The building already has a distinct presence in the community. So, renaming Millennium and then the new school administration building after Mrs., Mr. Olson's retirement will provide town meeting with the opportunity to honor Mr. Olson's service to Westford and also maintain the name of Stony Brook School. Any questions? Thank you.
Wow. George is, George.
My favorite school, by the way. It seems to me, we always manage to bugger up naming tasks, and I feel very uneasy about this whole thing. There's nobody who has given more to this town, is more dedicated, and has a longer record of doing it than Bill Olson. There's just, in my mind, there's no question about it, and I've worked him. I was on the committee when we hired him, for God's sake. But to, to throw this out at town meeting, and let's have this big debate about, you know, which is the, seems to me, this should have been done ahead of time, and there should have been consensus developed on it, and then brought to town meeting as a recommendation. Question, is the naming committee a subcommittee of the school committee? Isn't the naming committee supposed to have outside citizens' representation?
They do. They have five members.
Well, you, you.
None of four are.
Okay, I'm, I'm not.
None of which are school committee members.
Oh, okay. I asked you if it was a subcommittee of the school committee.
It is a subcommittee, but none of them sit on it.
Okay.
And George, just for background, we, we have for several weeks been encouraging the, the two, to get together and to come to an agreement so that that wouldn't. And at our motions meeting, so we talked about it a little bit Tuesday, at the motions meeting on Wednesday, and I think both have tried, you know, they're, they've been discussing, and they haven't been able to come to a, to a consensus. But they have, they have, in good faith, tried to get together and get to a common place.
Okay. I just think this is awkward and embarrassing for all concerned. Thank you, George. And thank you, everybody who's come tonight. Appreciate the input from Mark Cost, Jody Ross, Dan O'Donnell, and Susan Spohler, who is hiding in the audience. Thank you all very much for coming. Thank you, everyone at home for watching. Please go to town meeting on March twenty-third, and don't forget to take your Finance Committee report with you. You will need it. Thank you.